And if you could also put closed captions on, I would love that.
I can do that in a second.
And are there any agenda changes that you know of? And citizens speak. I'm seeing none. Okay. And we'll move on to priority business and start with the chair report. Let me open with the superintendent's search committee update. With confidence, relief, and excitement as a member of the superintendent's search committee and the chair of the Wellfleet School Committee and on behalf of our school committee, I'm delighted to welcome Ms. Brooke Punchey as the permanent superintendent of the Nauset Public Schools. We look forward to great collaborations, mind-opening thought partnering, and a seamless continuation along the trails that you, Brooke, have begun during your six months in our school system. During the past month, there have been so many things going on in our schools. Our administrative team under Brooke's leadership has worked tirelessly to meet the ever-changing needs of our students and families, our staff members, and our community. Our staff under Mary Beth's leadership has risen to the occasion in order to respond to the demands of educating and caring for our students. And our ship continues to sail bravissimo or bravissima or bravissimi. During the month that we remember as January, we received a lovely card from Betsy Pontius, and I'll share it with you now. And she writes, "I am sorry to miss what would have been my last meeting. It was an honor to serve on the committee for so many years. I truly appreciate that this experience has led me to the place in my career where I stand today. I have learned much from the interactions between educators and the public. The term stakeholders has real meaning to me, and I bring this forward. I know this committee will continue its dedicated work. I wish you all a prosperous and healthy 2022." And the flowers were unbelievably gorgeous. They filled each room in my house with the scent of Christmas. Many thanks. Love, Betsy. And finally, on behalf of the school committee, I wish the faculty and staff, the administration, the students and families a safe and happy February vacation week coming up soon. Respectfully submitted, Martha Gordon." And the superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you so much. I was thinking, as I was listening to Betsy's comments, and I thought the word dedication just popped out at me. I actually wrote it down, and I thought, that's how I feel about this district. I feel that it's filled with dedicated people. Every day I walk into an office that's filled with dedicated people. When I walk into our schools, they're filled with dedicated people. I think dedication just runs so deep in Nauset. I just want to make a quick comment to Martha, if I might. It is just such a privilege and such an honor for me to serve Nauset Public Schools. I am blessed. I feel fortunate. And I am genuinely excited about the work ahead. We know there's a lot of work ahead that we can do. There's a lot of work ahead that we want to do, and there's a lot of work that we will do. And I am so excited about what's ahead. So I thank every one of you for your support along the way. And it was a long process, was a very comprehensive process. But I said this before, and I say this tonight, too. I do feel I'm the right fit for this district. I really do. So thank you to everyone. So with that, then, I'll move into the superintendent's report. And I know I'm going to ask Dr. Millen to help me out tonight on a couple of items. The first is with regards to budget preparation. I think Gio and I are not quite, but almost ready to breathe a sigh of relief. We're both this close. It's been, it's been quite a challenge, but not a bad one. It's just a challenge to navigate every time you sit down to work through budgets. And for us to work through, you know, basically five full budgets, it's quite a process. But I feel really good about the outcomes right now. And Gio, certainly, I'll turn this over to you in a minute to just make a comment or two before I go into my next item. But I think that we feel that everyone worked really hard with this. I think it was a comprehensive process, and I feel very good about where we sit at right now. And we've, of course, worked in collaboration within the district. And now we've also reached out to the town administrators, including yours and Brewster. And we're looking at setting up meetings with both Eastham and Orleans next to kind of round out meeting with the town administrators. But I think overall, I think it's been a very successful process. So Gio, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that before I go to my next item.
No, Brooke, you summarized everything very eloquently. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for all of your hard work, Gio. It's just a real privilege to work with you through all of this. The next little section, actually, the reason I've put it on here is because one of our chairs in another district asked us if we could just review some of the newer positions that have come on stream for this current school year. Some of these were predetermined before I came on board. So some of them are new, but maybe not new to you. But we just want to kind of review them. Then a couple of others have come on board just as a result of some of the needs that we've seen with COVID. This aligns with some of our ESSER funds, and so we've kind of tied this all together. So I'm going to start the discussion a little bit. And then I know that Dr. Millen's just going to kind of pop in and out. So the first one is, of course, her position, right, which was new to the district. And I'll let her speak to it in a half a minute here, too, before she talks about the MTSS position. But I think that, you know, her love and her passion, of course, is working with curriculum. And I think that that has been phenomenal. And I think she's got us on a great start with the work with the strategic plan. So I think, you know, the position was initially created, I think, out of that robust work that was done with the strategic plan. What I think she would tell you now is that as much as she does that, she also interweaves quite a bit with my office. Quite a bit is probably an understatement. That door right behind her is my office, and we very often have it open. And we skirt back and forth with our chairs that are on wheels. So we tend to have quite a bit of communication. Works well for us. And so I think that, you know, since its original inception, the role has kind of also helped to kind of absorb other components of our daily work. And I think that that's just been really, really helpful to the district. And I think Robin brings a great lens to it. So Robin, if there's anything else you want to add to about your position specifically, and then let's go to the MTSS position.
Thank you, everyone, for having me again tonight. So Robin Millen, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So yes, the original inception of this position was exactly as Superintendent Punchey said, you know, to move the strategic plan forward. And I know just this week I met with the Strategic Planning Steering Committee, and we're continuing to do some adjustments, but also some work in those areas to make sure all of those goals and all those initiatives are moving in a way that, you know, fulfills that dream and that vision that we have of making sure there's increased learning outcomes for all of our students. So, but in the transition between having an assistant superintendent and obviously having this position, there are things that assistant superintendents had had in his, you know, job description that necessarily didn't fall into, you know, a specific place here in central office. So as we're getting up and running, and we realize some of these jobs need to be placed somewhere. Some of them are falling under my role, some of them are falling under, you know, student services, some are falling under business, so they're falling everywhere. So just know it's a work in progress, but we are working on that. So one of the things also that we realized really early on was that we have a multi-tiered system of support. It's a Massachusetts framework to help all students. We called it a tiered, we call it a tiered system of support. And it encompasses many, many systems, including my role, curriculum instruction. It includes your role as, you know, system structures with the community. It includes tiered instruction, which at the, you know, school-based level is called Tier One, and then all the way up to interventions, Tier Two and Tier Three. The work that had been done in this area prior, previous to us coming along was that they had a systematic structure and actually created a framework at Nauset called the Nauset Comprehensive System of Support. But it really never realized its full fruition. It was, you know, brought into the system in March of 2019. I think 2019, yes, 2019. And then obviously, we moved to COVID. So it never went out into the system in the way that it needed to do. Again, it is a Massachusetts framework. It is best practices for instruction and supports of all of our learners. So we want to make sure as part of that strategic planning that we're addressing the needs of everyone. So it was really important that we, we talked really early on with all of the elementary teachers, elementary administrators, and also the middle school and high school administrators. And it was clear that we needed to start somewhere and get that support coordinator position in to get this out into the systems. So the middle school, with their data that we were seeing and some of the effects of COVID that we were seeing, felt that it was necessary to start there. So we have hired a multi-tiered system of support coordinator. She will be starting after the February break. And the position is developed in response to really put in those effective implementation of the MTSS model. So I can expand on that at another time. But it is being funded through both an ESSER funding model. We are using some of the ESSER fundings. But we also did write a subsequent, out of my office, we wrote a subsequent social, emotional, and mental health grant to the tune of about $524,000 over the next two years to help offset this position. We do hope that this position will also become almost like a cross-district position. So I've wrapped this position around with other funding that will help the elementary principals and their task forces and the high school principals really get the system out into our, into our schools so that we can design this response intervention strategies, procedures, and systems. So that's one of the other new positions that is out there, and it is absolutely brand new.
Thanks, and we will keep this short, Martha, I promise. The facility, because sometimes we get so excited about our work, and I'm as bad as anyone. The facilities director is the next position that you've got listed, and that really is in part of response to the MSBA project at the high school. And what we're wanting to do is get somebody on board right now as soon as possible so that they can study the HVAC system and the technological systems that are going to go into place so that when the building is ready to go, they have a good, solid understanding. This person will also be part of the school building committee. This is being driven, of course, by the region. So ultimately, it's hoped that it will help to oversee the high school, the middle school, and central office in terms of facilities. So we're really excited about that. The next one, Robin, can you take the next, next couple there, please?
Sure. So the next few that are here are the Director of Specialized Programs, the School Adjustment Counselor, and also Elementary School Adjustment Counselor. And again, those are just support positions, both for special education and also for, like I said, the multi-tiered system of support for students within our schools throughout the pre-K-12 system. And some of them are in response to COVID and some of the information that we're receiving there. But some of those are just needed positions to make sure we're in compliance with the different situations that have special education mandates and regulations. And the last one, do you want me to speak about? The last, last two, actually. So the last two are our positions that we have put into place. When we came on board, there was originally a Director of English Learners slated to be a position, to be slated, to be billed as the whole district. What we realized really quickly, though, is that our numbers of our English language population isn't really large enough to equal out a full-time position in that area. So as Title III Coordinator, which is, again, something that's fallen under my role, we decided that we would just hire a .2 FTE across the district and make that person the English learner liaison for the district. So actually, I just left a meeting where she, her name is Paige Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan is holding the first English learner parent advisory committee meeting of this year. It is being translated. If we get out of here early enough, you can move over to that and sit in on that. It is an opportunity where our English learner families can, you know, access the information that we have. We're having it translated on dual channels. So we have four translatable languages in this district. So right now, we're translating in Portuguese, because that's what the population that's there at tonight's meeting. But there's 138 English learners in our entire district, and there are 23 total languages that are spoken. However, we're not seeing a huge increase in this population. Some of our other districts on the Commonwealth and on the Cape are seeing huge amounts of Afghani refugees, Brazilian refugees. We're not seeing that in Nauset. So this position is appropriate to start bridging that gap from home to school, school to home, to make sure that we have vehicles of communication in those situations. But this commission, this position is also responsible for making sure that we have the Bilinguality Award, the Seal of Bilinguality Award, which is an award that's given to seniors who graduate that show that they have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages. So really saying, you know what, being bilingual is a really good thing, and that we really want to celebrate both, you know, multilegal and bilingual by literacy supports and making sure that they get the recognition for those. So this position is forming as we go, but I think it's a good first step in order to make sure that everybody's at the table. And then the last position is actually an English learner educational assistant, which was placed at the high school. We, again, don't have a huge increase in newcomers at our school. However, we do have an increase at the high school, just a slight one, which is unusual. Usually, our newcomers are students who come as their first educational experiences here in, you know, the United States, usually start in the elementary schools, sometimes in the middle and Nauset, very rarely at the high school. But we have had an increase in newcomers at the high school. So this educational assistant, along with some adaptive technologies, are allowing that, those students to make sure they access the grade equivalent expectations that they have in their formal education in their home country. So it's a new position, so we wanted to report on that.
Thank you. And I think the only other thing before I move to the project, Dr. Millen, is the search, the ongoing search right now for the high school principal. So maybe if you can just speak to that, because I know that you and Mary Buchanan and Joanna Hughes are all working on that particular search. So maybe you could just provide a quick update.
Sure, just a quick update. So yes, we have started the high school principal search. We have a wonderful interview committee. They compass a diverse population of teachers, caregivers. We have students, and then we also have community members, some of which are here. Laura, thank you very much for being on that as our community member. So we have a really nice representation. We have vetted all the, all the resumes that came in. We had 11 resumes. There were seven viable, what we would call seven viable resumes. And then the committee went through all those resumes, and they decided to interview four candidates. So we have started those interviews. They started on Monday. They'll finish tomorrow. We hope to then whittle that pool down. And then the next step, if we come to agreement, we will send those candidates down, out to focus groups or a meet and greet, similar to the same situation that Superintendent Punchey went through. So there'll be a caregiver meet and greet. There will be a staff meet and greet, and there'll be a student meet and greet. We will collect feedback from each of those meet and greets, from all those stakeholders. And then we'll do, you know, the reference checks, all of those steps included in that. But then the final candidates will be referred to Superintendent Punchey, who ultimately will make the decision as to hire the principal. And we will hopefully have that announcement by the end of February.
Great, thank you. And then, so that goes to your broad-stroke overview. And Robin, I think we did a nice job of moving that along quickly for how much information was there to push out. The last thing for me in the superintendent's report then is just a quick update on the MSBA project at the Nauset Regional High School. And the project continues to move forward. The school building committee continues to meet regularly. We've also had separate meetings with Greg Lavasser. I know he came in, and I think we met for about an hour and a half or two hours the other day with Giovanna, Jim, James, and myself. And then we also meet with Kathleen Tringalli and Tom Ferris, who are the representatives on the high school front and doing a yeoman's work on that level. And it's kind of like a bit of, I don't want to say two camps, but it's not. But you kind of have Greg Lavasser, who's helping with the management of the actual construction component. And you have Tom and Kathleen, who are doing so much work with regards to how does this all fit together? What does the scheduling look like? What does, what does a calendar look like? Who's going where? You know, all of that kind of stuff. There's so much to do right now. You know, I think it was, I know that Gio went, and with Griffin, I believe, you went together to secure the modulars. That was a huge, huge milestone for us to secure them. And it'll be quite a sight. I think we're going to have to take pictures of those 37 modulars coming across Sagamore. I just can't even imagine what it's going to look like. But I'm pretty sure it's going to be picture-worthy. So right now, of course, that's where a lot of our due diligence is, is kind of creating that campus within a campus and what those buildings look like. Because if you think about it, that's going to be, for some students, the majority of their high school experience is going to be in those modulars. And so we're really cognizant of that. But then we've got other just basic things that we're trying to work through. Okay, what does that feeding line look like? Where does, where do we reconstruct a cafeteria? All those other things that are coming into play. The gymnasium will be off, you know, offline. Okay, so what are we going to do instead? So there are a lot of little details right now that we're working through, as well as the regular details that come along with the school building committee and meeting with the architects and the OPM, et cetera. So a lot of planning, a lot of work on this project. It's extensive and it's comprehensive, and it's, and it's fun. I'm really enjoying the work with it, so it's been very, very good. So Gio, I don't know if there's anything you'd want to add to the building project, because I know that you sit on every committee meeting as well.
No, you summarized everything.
Okay, great, thank you. And that's it. I know it was a longer report tonight. My apologies. We talked as quickly as we could. Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone.
No apologies needed. Thank you, Brooke and Robin. I just want to make sure that there are no questions from the committee on any of this information. I'm breathless trying to keep up with it. I'm so glad Arlen's here to take notes. Does anybody, Joan, yeah?
Whoops. I want to know what MSBA is it?
Yes, Massachusetts School Building Authority. And that's who we, who we partner with, and that's who we're, who is basically a huge part of the funding behind this project. So we work in very close partnership with them.
They're in Boston?
Yes, they're out of Boston. Yes, they're also linked with the DESE, with the Department of Elementary Secondary Education, with the government's governance structure on Beacon Hill. It's all interconnected.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I did have a question about funding. I think for Robin, you mentioned hiring a coordinator for the MTSS, and that some of the money was coming from the ESSER grant, and other money was coming from another grant. I'm just wondering whether that other grant has been awarded yet, or we're just hoping. Is it, is it actually?
So yes, for this one, so the, it's a very long name, but Social, Emotional, and Mental Health Grant that has been awarded to us. It's a three-part grant, and it's over two years. And it includes a mental health screener, includes this position, and includes the wraparound, like stipended positions, consultations with professional development and things like that. That has been granted. We have also, and that one is about $500,000. I don't have it right off the top of my head, because of so many grants lately. I'm getting them all confused, the total amounts. But the second, we do have a second grant out that will also fund this. If, if we, so we don't need to use ESSER, and we can hold ESSER. We have another grant request out right now, and we're waiting on that. And that will offset some of those as well. So we're trying to write as many grants as possible right now so that we can provide the big, you know, supplement our programs as much as we can. And some of them crossover, so it just depends on which ones we get, where we'll use, which funding.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
I think Joan has another question.
Oh. Joan, you're muted there.
I know, because I have two dogs that will bark at any moment. Is it, is it renewable?
The grants?
It's a $500,000 one. Is it renewable, or is it a one-shot?
So the SEL grant is over two years with renewable for another year, I believe, this last one. So they are short-term grants. So what we're putting into these grants are things that we think we can accomplish within those time periods. And then we will assess them, and then we will make determination as to what we need to do at that point. The same with ESSER. ESSER will, you know, have a sunset clause in it, you know. So again, we're trying not to put too many things that are long-term things into those grants because of the fact that we know there is a financial end to them. So most of them, though, do continue for, even the secondary grant that we're waiting on information from, that has a two-year grant with a continuation possibility of another year.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Martha? Whoops. If I could, thanks. If I can just add, too. One of the things we are seeing right now, and correct me if you think I'm speaking out of turn, Robin, is a longer term on some of these grants, longer than I've seen. You know, in past years, you might get a one, maybe a two-year. Right now, we're seeing basically two and three years with potential of something behind that as well. So it's the first time in my, in my career where I've seen these longer-term grants. But to Robin's point, and it's interesting, because I know Jill, you were on that meeting the other day with Representative Peake, you know, basically saying to be cautious with that in terms of not, of your use of the grant funding so that you don't hit that funding cliff. So we are incredibly cognizant of that as we strategize along the way to maximize all of our grants. The other thing I would say is that I don't know if I can think back to a time when we've had access to the number of grants that we've got right now. And Robin is just doing, again, yeoman's work here with regards to grant writing, because we're trying to make sure that we leave nothing on the table. But it's a lot of work, because it's every time you write one grant, you're really writing five, right? Because you write one for every district, as well as regional. So it's like, not just one, one grant, one grant equals five times however many that we've done. And, you know, some of them are, some of them are shorter in terms of the work. Others are really extensive.
So I guess I just realized that we forgot to put one position on this, which is the grant manager position. The grant manager position won't necessarily write the grants. I'll still be continuing to write most of the grants, because most of it is based in research and a lot of data collection and stuff. But the grant manager will help with just like the editing and doing all of that stuff, but also the uploading of all of these things. Because again, superintendent's, right, I mean, we have an SOA grant right now. And of course, it's not just one. We have to do it five times for all the different districts. So it is quite encompassing, and you have to be careful when you write all these, because now we have to collect all the evidence that we're doing these things. The other thing I would tell this district is that we are eligible for more grants. And I think you've seen in the past, because we are eligible, well, Wellfleet maybe not so much, because you have had the rural grants before. But as a district and as a population across all the districts, not only are we eligible for more of the rural grants now, because we have less full-time population on a year-round basis, but we're also seeing a huge rise in economically disadvantaged of those who are here. So we don't qualify for like, a lot of the federal grants, because our real estate puts us out of those. But those rural aid grants, you're starting to see, Wellfleet has been eligible over the last couple of years, but the other districts now are also eligible. So you're starting to see more of those come up in this area.
Thank you both so much. Good questions, too. I, we are ready for Mary Beth's report. Oh, Jill, sorry.
Back to the high school campus. Just the educator in me is having some wanderings, ponderings. I would hope and assume that if there's any students that are interested in, well, I'm thinking about student learning opportunities when I think about STEM. What, what an opportunity, you know, whether it's architecture or, you know, how to design modulars. And I know, of course, there are so many boundaries, restrictions, and roles, responsibilities, safety, and all that. And one doesn't have to answer it, but I'm just thinking about how rich that is for some students to participate, perhaps, in some, something educational, an opportunity to deal with that. And the other pondering I'm having is, I heard that the gym's going to be out of commission for a while, and how to do that. And I would not be surprised if there's some students with some good suggestions. And, and once again, you know, they're stakeholders, too. And, you know, we want critical thinkers and creative problem solvers. So again, people don't have to answer it. I'm just cognizant that this could be a very rich opportunity for some motivated students.
And Brooke?
Sure. So I think really, really well articulated, Joe. I think one of the things that I'm especially enjoying right now is all that Kathleen Tringalli and Tom Ferris bring to this table, too, because they are so boots-on-the-ground. And so I think they're very cognizant to that, as much as they're cognizant to the fact that there are other staff that are, have different ideas and different goals. And I mean, so it's really interesting, like I say, when you take a look at the kind of two, two venues that feed all of this, you know, when you look at the management component of the construction versus the educational programming piece, you know. So you'll see us now start to kind of merge all of that over the course of the next couple of months. But I think there are great ponderings. But I think they're great ponderings that you have there and duly noted. So thank you.
Everybody else, anybody else? Principal Rodman, are you ready?
I believe I am. Mine is much shorter.
Oh, wait, before you start, please never apologize for giving too much information. It's really good for us. Keeps our minds young.
I just wanted to let you know that, of course, attendance letters will be going out very soon. We had to move the 100th day of school to Monday, the 28th of February. We, however, will be sending out the letters for any student who has eight or more unexcused absences over the first six months of school. Those will go out on Friday, February 18th, as opposed to the Monday. So on day 99, we will go out. The only other thing that I wanted to add to the report is that Sergeant Paul Clark has completed doing stranger danger presentations for all of the classrooms virtually, as well as Alice training. So it's training to students and staff of alternatives to traditional lockdown. So it's been challenging. We did it last year remotely and he did that again this year. So hopefully we'll be able to have him back in the building soon. Any questions?
Liberty?
A question. I was just thinking about Brooke's report and then thinking about how some of the, you know, social emotional programming and that sort of stuff is kind of happening at the elementary school. And I was wondering if they still do like the meditation class and the calmer step or something like that.
We did, we worked with, gosh, I can't think of her name off the top of my head. But Claudia went through some graduate courses to do mindfulness and breathing, belly breathing, those types of techniques for self-regulation. The other curriculum that we use is Second Step.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So most of those lessons are taught by the school psychologist. And tomorrow actually is the first day that the teachers will be completing the Deveraux Strength. I can't think of the rest of it, assessment, the DSS screening for their students. So we're doing that twice a year. So tomorrow is the first time that we're doing it. Next year, we will do it in the fall and then again in the spring.
Great. Thank you. And I think we are all set except Mary Beth. It's you again with the playground update.
Sure. I'm happy to report that we are now over $61,500 for donations from the town and other folks that wanted to contribute to the playground in donations. And we are looking to use $12,000 from the Esser III funds to be able to finish off the $385,000 for the playground. CPC, of course, is allotting us $315,000. So Giovanna and I were talking on Friday about, you know, we were hoping that we'd be able to have the equipment and things ordered this month in February for July build. Since town meeting is the end of April, we're going to have to check with the town hall first to see if we can move forward with that or do we absolutely have to wait until after town meeting, which means the build would probably happen in September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Jill, your hand is up. Is it still up? Well, would you like to take over? Because you were talking about the Cape Cod Collaborative Capital Plan and we need a vote. And perhaps you could give us some background on that.
Yes. Briefly, this does not commit, this vote does not commit the committee to funding, nor does it really commit the collaborative to funding, but it just acknowledges, recognizes the needs of, you know, when appropriate for capital. And so this typically, this is just identifying the capital needs as the funding permits. So, so far, there's already been votes from Orleans, Eastham, Turo, Provincetown and a lot of other school districts. We're a little bit behind in our vote. So that's really basically it. You know, the collaborative is part of the rules and whatnot, needs approval from the majority of the member of the school districts. So that's why we are part of voting for it.
Brooke, I'm sorry.
Sure. And as I just want to kind of spring from, from Jill's comments, this is really housekeeping and this is certainly something that we should be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think what has to happen now is perhaps we need to make a motion. Somebody needs to make a motion. We need a second to accept the collaborative plan as written.
Okay, well, I'll be happy to kick this off. I'd make a motion, Jill Plutnum, to approve the capital plan of the collaborative as you have the copy as written.
Liberty, is that a second?
Liberty, so second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Okie doke. How many people are in favor of accepting the capital plan? I think we're all set. That carries unanimously. Great.
Thank you. I'll email Paul this evening.
Lovely. Thanks. And the next piece is the Wellfleet Elementary School Handbook. Would you like to take that, Mary Beth?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So I just want to give a little history. When I was in my former district, the spring of every year, I was the person as the assistant principal to bring forward to the school committee any changes that were made to the handbook. So that the school committee was aware of what was in the handbook and they could give their blessing. So when I got to NOSIT, that was not the practice here. So we are going now back to the practice that I was comfortable with, that I understood when I was in my former district. So that's what tonight is about. Even though our handbook is, you know, six months in, we just wanted to bring that to your attention, that this will be a new practice that we will be bringing to you, the changes that happen to our handbook every year. So just to give you a little history, the handbooks for all the elementary schools in NOSIT were really sort of done in a vacuum. And so as elementary principals, we were really uncomfortable with that. So back in 2018, 19, we worked with Dr. Graniere on how can we consolidate these handbooks? So that we had the salient summaries of NOSIT policies in there. You know, when things got changed from central office, we were unsure where exactly do we put them in the handbook? So it just, we needed to be on the same page. So it was decided that we would send to Dr. Graniere and Sarah Miller what are current handbooks, what they had been, so that they could consolidate the things that were the same for continuity and accuracy when it came to policies, general information, student supports, et cetera. Yet they still needed to be customized to reflect our own districts. So things in there such as the principal's letter, the chart for staffing, our school councils, et cetera. So that is the, the handbook that we currently have is reflective of that work that was completed in the summer of 2019. So Laura Bagetti and I were talking today because there are some errors in there that I didn't catch. You know, when I was working on the handbook this summer, I was more focused on the after-school childcare program and of course, the staffing chart and those types of things. So there are some minor errors in there. For example, when it talks about building use, it refers to the Orleans Elementary. So I think when they were consolidating, they had taken from one or the other and just forgot to, to change that per, per school. So that's where we are. And my plan is this spring to be able to bring forward to you what the changes will be from the handbook that you currently have for you with those corrections made.
Questions, comments? Yes, Superintendent Clinchy?
Thank you. So the goal here is ultimately that we get ourselves onto a regular cycle. And that Mary Beth, for example, would only bring you a sheet next year while this spring. It just has a salient changes and that's all. But that foundational document stays the same, but you vote on those changes every year. So that, it's, it should be an easy lift. That's our hope.
I, I really liked the code of conduct. It's so easy to read and so clear. For some reason, and I'm not a big code of conduct kind of person, but I really like that chart.
In the, the year previous to that was when it was the charge of our staff meetings for all of the elementary schools to come up with the matrix for discipline. So it was the work of the entire staff, putting that matrix together and then putting that into our handbook. So those are unique as well to all of the elementary schools in NOSIT.
Common language is important. Are there any other questions or comments about this, Laura?
Well, I think I missed my opportunity. I, I had a question about the playground. Can I go back? Or am I too late? It's okay if I.
You can certainly go back. I don't know what Robert, Robert of the rules would say, but. We're in Wellfleet.
So I, okay, so my, I guess I just, so are, are you going to try to go to the town in February? Or is that missed?
No, we're, we're still hoping for a February purchase. However, since the CPC made it clear to us that it was allocated, the money's allocated to us and considering the financial matters of the town and what they've been going through, if that wasn't in place, we couldn't move forward. So we just want to double-check with the town before we go into having them purchase in February as planned, that they can say, yes, that money will be available to you so you can move forward. If they're not comfortable with that, given the financial matters of the town, then it just means we would have to wait for the 315,000 CPA funds to be approved at town meeting. And then they would purchase the equipment to be installed. It's about a three-month wait for the equipment to come in. And once it's in, it's a two-week install.
Okay, okay. So just to wait and see, not sure what they'll say in February. Got it.
I have the quote, he's ready to order, so we just need to get the blessing from the town.
Got it. Okay.
Will that require a select board meeting, Mary Beth, or just?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
There's nothing we can do to like, to help that, I assume, to help them figure it out in February?
No, I, I think, I think it's really the financial matter. And so to have the person that we would like to speak with.
I have taken over buildings in my past.
And it's not resistance, it's just, you know, we don't want to, Giovanna doesn't want to sign off on anything.
Understood.
Insurance.
Okay. No hostages will be taken for, okay. All right.
Thank you. Great question, though.
Thank you. And Giovanna, we are ready for you.
Thank you. Let's go directly to the last page of the report, page nine, please. The prior month balance was $124,152. We spent our incumbent $8,000 since last month's reporting, leaving a balance of $116,152. I'm going to go over the items that were over $1,000 since last month's reporting. Starting on page one, at the top of the page, line item 4003, the salary central office. Here we have a negative amount. We spent our incumbent additional $1,390 since last month's reporting. And that is due to the negative variance in the central office due to the salary costs. So we will reclassify some expenses into grants. So next month's reporting, you'll see that go away. Moving on to page two, at the top of the page, line item 4067, special education contracted services, medical therapeutic. Here we saw encumbrances or spent $10,413 since last month's reporting. And that is for additional services required for a student per their IEP. Moving on to page four, at the top of the page, line item 4027, other instructional material. We spent our incumbent $1,161 since last month's reporting. And that's all based on building needs. Moving on to page five, the line item 4045, the regular day transportation. Here we saw $7,348 go back into the budget. That was due to the money that the collaborative distributed to the districts with respect to the credits for the payroll protection program. So that was comprised of credits in the regular education of $8,974, plus some additional costs that were not totally covered by the operating budget, but were covered by Esser II money. This was the additional costs for increasing the hourly rate for the employees to remain competitive with other vendors on the Cape. Moving on to page seven, towards the top of the page, line item 4050, overtime custodial. Here we saw $1,080 since last month's reporting and that's the need to cover for absences and additional time required to, to clean. And that is my report. Any questions on this month's report?
Good. Saying none, we can move over to the review of the Wellfleet Elementary School Fiscal Year 2023 budget. And that's Mary Beth.
Hello. So the corrections were made. Thank you to Laura Bagetti for catching last month the errors in line item 4068 and 4071. And those were for substitute teachers in 4068, so we made those corrections. It actually was $112.50 a day for special ed teacher substitute. And in 4071, substitutes for ed assistants, we made the correction to reflect that it's $101.25 per day for our substitutes. So those corrections were made and it did make a slight change to our grand total. We are now at a minus 22% for FY '23. In regular day, we came in, the difference was 1,009,303 or 5.24% increase. And for special education, it's minus 115,478 or minus 14.9%, bringing us into minus point 22%. No other changes were made since the presentation last month.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Lovely. Zen, are we to vote on this? Do we vote? Yes. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the budget, accept the budget, approve it, I guess, for the fiscal year 2023?
Jill Plutnum, so move.
Thank you. Second? Anyone?
Second.
Thank you, Liberty. Okay. And all those in favor, please? Thank you. And that has passed. And we're on to reports and information. And Jill, the collaborative.
There was a meeting on January 12th and tomorrow there is a meeting. Transportation remains to be quite the challenge. There's a lot more demand for transportation, but there's less resources such as significantly drivers, issues with drivers as far as pandemic. significantly drivers, issues with drivers as far as pandemic related or quarantining or retiring. And also there were some buses that were due in October and they're still not here yet. There was a small increase in wages for the transportation for the drivers. Never enough, but at least as I heard earlier as well in Giovanna's report, you know, to make it more competitive. The tiny little rise in pay. Collaborative is working on a strategic plan. There's a board subcommittee. Their focus is very much going to be a regional focus of what all of us in the region are challenged by, such as social emotional issues, learning and for staff, children, families. Ensuring the capacity of schools to meet the demands that have resulted from the pandemic that are very diverse. Once again, social emotional. As well as increased needs, other increased needs of students and families and staff. Of course, the decreasing student population, demographic issues, lost instruction and connections. And so on. Negotiations are happening in the collaborative's way. So in other words, the collaborative does not have a union like schools do. The collaborative being of collaborative, there's no union. So there is some work being done as far as schedules and you know, non-union negotiations. William Frill, who is our treasurer, we just completed an evaluation on him. I mean, even though people in the collaborative don't have their fingers on the pulse as much as staff do. The collaborative, you know, administrative staff, you know, there is input. And William has been there for a while and he does a very good job. So his evaluations came out quite well and he is a good communicator. He makes things simple, concise, understandable, and he's, he has a very good track record. We're under consideration right now and what is it going to look like for Paul Hilton or executive director's evaluation? In years past, it's been more of an open ended sort of evaluation with ranks for numbers. But clearly, you know, the leadership piece, the management piece and all that. So that I'll learn more tomorrow about where the subcommittee landed as far as his evaluation. In, in, in respect to what form it's going to be. And of course, just like we do, there's work on the budget, spending plan, line items. Similar to us as well, their playground needed help and right now there's no playground and raising money for the playground. Brings me to the legislative breakfast. There was a legislative breakfast this past Friday. And I'm pleased to say Brooke was there and so was Laura. So Brooke and Laura, after I'm done my report, you know, if there's anything you want to add, please go ahead. I, I condensed all my thoughts and all my notes and it still turned out to be a page. I mean, it was a very rich legislative breakfast. It was the second Zoom legislative breakfast, the 13th year of a legislative breakfast. And this one, as well as all the different iterations in the past, we have, we being the collaborative, we being the whole Cape Cod region, have a stellar representation of our legislators, our senators that attend. And this year, who was there, if you will, on the screen? Always Sarah Peak. She's just amazing. She, I can't even put in words what she does for all the needs on the Cape. But anyway, Sarah Peak and Julian Seer were very vocal, very representative on this. David Vieira Vieira from the Falmouth area was there, Representative Diggs mid Cape. Dylan Fernandez, a young legislator from the islands was there. And even the couple of legislators that weren't there, there were representatives from their office that was there. Paul Hilton expressed, who's our executive director, spoke about the needs of the collaborative, about facilities issues and needing support. If the collaborative being an extension of all the school districts, there are unique needs of the collaborative as well as the special students that the collaborative serves. And the collaborative, unlike regular school districts, there aren't eligible for the various incentives or school budget perks. Like districts, they don't have the bonding things that the districts have. So it is quite challenging and unique when there is the need for buildings. And as we know, the collaborative definitely is working on renovating a building right now for their needs. There were some presentations and legislators gave a little presentation and introduced themselves as well. And then we broke up into breakout sessions. In the breakout sessions, Sarah Peak led the one that I was in and the one that Laura was in. I don't even remember. Well, I, it's right now that piece is a fog, but we, you know, of course, so many things are interrelated on the Cape. So a big need, you know, and all, and a great deal of breakout sections, when we some, when somebody would sum up what happened in the breakout sessions. And, you know, common denominators were, you know, getting qualified, good people on the Cape. But, you know, the housing and the cost of living and all that interrelated stuff that makes it so challenging for people to live and work on the Cape, especially younger folks. So that was a big need. And again, employees, whether they're teachers or whether they're bus drivers, what a huge need we have on the Cape. Mental health and accessibility of mental health was another big issue identified. Sarah Peak, as other former years, has urged people that legislators really want to help as much as they can, but they need information in just very concise forms. So very concise and easily accessible information. Presentations at the end, there was various presentations on social emotional. And I did send to my school committee people resources, but it was very, very rich. Kim Garrison and students from the Martha Vin, Martha's Vineyard. Kim Garrison is a behavioral health specialist. And she has had a very successful program with high school students that deal with mental health literacy. And some of the assessments and things that were used are shape assessments, C H A P E assessments, it's a mental health screening. SELIS, S E L I S, social emotional educational learning indicator is another one that was repetitively one that's people have been happy with. Melissa McGuire of Monamoy calls a lot of the, her social emotional or what they do there as health education. So it's under the umbrella of health education for the students, for the social emotional. It was just very full. So Brooke and Laura, if you have anything you want to add to this, I know there's so much.
Laura, do you want to go first and then I can wrap up? No? Okay. She captured it all?
I mean, yeah, I mean, she pretty much did. The only thing I would add, I thought that, I think it was Sarah Peak. She made a really big push to for, for the, the housing crisis is that people in the school community should be pushing these towns. She says that's where there's, there really could be a push because basically, she says, we're at a point in some places in the state or in the area, you know, that we will close schools if people can't live in those places. And she says, that's where the education and the school piece comes in. And so that, she says, that might be missing from town. So I thought that was a really good point. You know, is, is part of our role even is, as the school community to, to, to really, for these, you know, these housing developments. And I know Jan was a huge part of that, but, you know, to, to really push these towns and push education. Because well, the schools will close if we don't have enrollment. So I thought that was an interesting point, which I'm sure you all thought, think about all the time, but I thought it was good. I, you know, I, I've never done one of those and it was, it was eye opening. I learned a lot just by seeing the representatives there. So it was cool. So.
So I, I'll just kind of spring from this too. I thought it was a, a really solid session, solid presentations. I enjoyed the breakout room, the, the one breakout room that I was in, Glenn Kuchar led that one, our executive director for M A F C. And I would agree 100% Joe with what you said. I thought you did a great job, by the way, of trying to pull all of that into a synoptic because there was so much. But I would also agree with you too, that the, the commonalities or the common threads, it was crystal clear. As you, and they were like, I think there were two and a half pages of bodies, like screens on that Zoom call. And the, the through lines were, were there. And Laura, you're right about the advocacy for, for helping to support our communities to get housing, you know, that's more affordable, you know, brought in and such. I would also agree with Jill too. I, I really enjoyed listening to our legislators. And I would agree too, Sarah Peak, I, I thought just did an amazing job. Listening to, I really appreciate listening to her and Julian is there. There's just seem to be such a depth of understanding of the work. And I thought that that came through abundantly clear. So I really, I enjoyed it. I, and I thought, you know, I was texting Paul Hilton through, through the, the presentations because I thought he did a great job. He and his team did a great job. That's a lot of people to pull together for such a major event. And I just thought he did an amazing job. So yes, I thoroughly enjoyed it. It was great.
Thank you all for that. And Jill, if I haven't thanked you for sending out that information, it's really helpful. I've, I've delved into it. It's great. I recommend it. And I think we are next with the PTA report. Did anyone go? Liberty?
I did go. They had a meeting yesterday. They're doing great. They're planning on doing Westfest this year. So that was exciting. So hopefully that works out. And I mean, it's outdoor. So I think that'll be great. And I let them know that we're here for support, what they need with that. I'm thinking about doing a barbecue this year. And charity is going to be stepping down as president next year. And Tia will likely be taking over, who is a close friend of mine. So that's fun. And Lauren will be taking over as vice president. That's it. Oh, they, they are kicking around the idea of rebranding the Live Well Fleet stickers and kind of rebranding Wellfleet Elementary to come up with a mascot. So that we were talking about how Truro has the Pam at Pumas. And so then we had a very long Mary Beth conversation. A long creative conversation about all the different animals that could represent Wellfleet. I know it used to be the surfers, but they, they got kind of off that. So yeah, I'm sure if you have any fun suggestions, I can let them know. And that's about it.
Fisher cats.
The Fisher cats.
Not support that.
I still like the sunfish, the floppy sunfish. But, and they still have money in the gift account because they didn't end up doing field trips. So they're going to be able to use that to help with Westfest possibly. And that's about all that I have. And we're here to support them if they need it.
Excellent. Thank you, Liberty. I'm glad you were able to make it.
Better late than never, Martha.
Oh boy. It's hard to be a working parent and be on the school committee, for sure. Actually, any two of those things are hard enough. We, the strategic, strategic planning steering committee met, I think we met last week. It's a blur. And we did talk about revising our implementation table in terms of when things were actually going to be, some of the things would be completed and worked on. I looked over, I have to say, Robin, there's not a whole lot of revision there that we're, we're chugging on ahead, which is really, really, it's fun to see the boxes being filled in and that people are really moving ahead with this. So I thank you and everybody for that. It's, it's great to see that. We'll be meeting again in the spring to revisit all of this. And it was a joy for me to get together with that group again. Unfortunately, my internet was not working well. So I, I kept getting frozen out. But was that a Google meet, meeting? Yeah, for some reason, I'm not, I don't get those as well as the Zoom. I don't know why. Did you want to add anything, Robin, to that, since you were there for the whole thing?
I just appreciate that the strategic planning committee and the steering committee is still willing to keep meeting. And so this, this plan doesn't just sit on a shelf. It's a, it's a living, breathing document. We started adding evidence to a fourth or fifth column on there. So people could see the development of things being completed or actions being started so that it just, it can be transparent and know where we're heading. And I also just really appreciate the understanding that some things have to flex and some things might have to change simply because of the situations that we're in. So I just appreciate the understanding and the flexibility that we can adapt it to make it work for what the students need in our district. So thank you.
Thank you. And I think you said that it would be living on the website as well. So as changes are made and additions are made to it, more information is being filled in. It will be living not just in classrooms and everywhere, but out there for the public to see as it's morphing, I guess. That's an odd word, but as it's changing.
You're absolutely right. We're trying to find the best avenue to get that information so people can access it if they want to see it.
That's great. That's really fantastic. Thank you. Thanks so much. I'm so glad you're here for that. I don't think the negotiation subcommittee has needed to meet. Maybe they didn't, they didn't invite me, but they haven't met as far as I know. We do have the memorandum of understanding with the union in terms of COVID regulations. And the policy subcommittee was supposed to meet yesterday. And we had a Zoom snafu, I guess. So we have to reschedule that. Joan, the school council, oh, Behavioral Health Task Force, I skipped that.
Right. Yes. So that was my first time on behavioral health. And they talked about the additional, the adjustment council at the high school, which is full time, starting after February vacation. And am I, correct me if I'm wrong, the MPS coordinator overseeing things, mass peer support, which is interventions prior to, and educate services that will be addressed in the middle school, that person will be full time, right? They talked about Gosnell and workshops for students, anyone, and also for parents. That will be happening. A lot of the conversation was around vaping, which seems to be a significant problem. And I mean, I have to laugh because, well, otherwise I cry. They talk about the bathrooms being a big issue for vaping. And so like gender identified bathrooms, it's sort of a, an architectural problem in some ways. I suggested no one went for it, that there not be student and staff bathrooms, but the bathrooms would be accessible to all. Because if kids knew that staff was using those bathrooms as much as students were using it, it may just cut back on, on that problem just by doing that. But it, it wasn't grabbed. And uh, that, there was um, talk about there's no Al-Anon anymore. I think that was a before school thing that was happening. And now it's only happening in Western Mass. There's a bright program at the middle school and the high school, which I believe is for children that have been hospitalized and easing their transition back um, out of a hospital setting and back into um, a gradation like uh, of school uh, as appropriate. Um, and a trauma, a, a trauma piece. That's, that's um, key to that program. I don't know if anyone else was there and wanted to add more to that. I was happy to hear new positions were going in. Um, and uh, you talked about that, Robin. So, yeah, it's great. Questions? Which I probably can answer.
Thank you, Joan. It's, it's, I'm so happy that you're part of that group now. It, it eases my guilt.
Get the tempo of it and the emphasis, you know, of what's going on. Um, and um, I'm happy to be on it. Thanks, Martha.
Good. Thank you. And.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, Laura.
It's, it's just about, I, what, I mean, so are, is staff finding the students vaping in the bathroom? Or is it hearsay? Or, and is there disciplinary action? Yes. Liberty.
I, I mean, I hear as a parent that, oh, there's certain bathrooms that we don't go into because kids are in there vaping constantly. And so I think some of it is just, that is, you know, the talk on the street. And I, I believe that, yeah, some of them have a lot of vape, smoke or whatever it is in them. So, and then some of it, I'm sure is teachers and they're getting disciplined for it. But uh, you know, it's a tough one.
It is. And I'm not too new either. Robin and Ben, Brooke?
Robin, do you want to start and I'll finish?
You're gonna have to unmute.
Why don't you start?
Okay, so um, so at the end of the day, I think you're absolutely right. And I think that we, we also see it as a problem. And you know, it, it's different too. I mean, and, and way back when, and like when the dinosaurs roamed the earth and there was smoking in the bathrooms, that was one thing because you could smell it. Uh, the problem with vaping, of course, is that for the most part, you don't smell it. And so, and, and you know, and I remember when vaping first started and we had um, presentations made to our communities and to our school committees and such. And at the time, you could see the vaping equipment because it was maybe this big. But now, now it's not that big. It's like a flash drive, you know, it's just, it's small. And so they can, you know, just shove it up their sleeves or where, wherever. And so the pro, the problem is bigger. I, I think what I think is frustrating um, as an educator and maybe as a mom, is, is you look and say, with this much information that's out there, that's available to us right now, as you know, online. Not that everything you read is true, but there are some good documentation, the pieces of documents out there that would tell you the damage this does to the body. And and I don't understand why this has grown to be such an enormous issue when we know how detrimental it is to the lungs, et cetera. So I mean, I, I think that you'll see us continue to do some work. And I know Robin will speak to that here in a minute, but you'll see us to continue to, to do some work. But I guess I see it too broad. I think that there's a, there's a discipline component that needs to be at play here. And there's an educational component that needs to be at play. And I think those two prongs need to, to, to come into um, into full effect. And Joan, to your point, um, you know, it shouldn't just be about bathrooms that are for students and for adults. Adults need to be monitoring um, that as well. And you know, I mean, um, there, there are other things that we can put into play here to help support this. But, but we need to make sure that we're all on the same page for expectations. And I think that that's number one. So.
Right. Otherwise, people, otherwise teachers, parents, whatever, do, sort of avoid it.
Yeah.
Because what's the protocol?
Right. And, and so I think that that gets back to even simple things like the, the handbook, for example. I mean, I know that you don't really need to deal with this at, at this li, level. But at the middle and high school, there should be something there. And so those books need to be consistently updated every year so that they're timely. And they address current issues and current problems. So uh, so you'll see us go back, you'll see us go after that. Dare I jump onto another topic? I digress, but just for a minute, and you'll see the same thing with attendance, right? We have to have things in place for attendance and expectations. And there needs to be appropriate policy, appropriate handbook, and appropriate education and appropriate procedures in place to deal with it. I see the vaping as the same kind of thing. What are the basic expectations? And what's the procedure now that follows that? Robin, sorry, I clocked too long. I apologize, Robin.
I, I just wanted to add that obviously the state of Massachusetts and the Department of Ed is on this as well. So they just issued in May of twenty one, a new curriculum resource guide for schools, which starts really young. I know Superintendent Funchy just said he might not need to worry about it in the elementary handbooks, but it might be something you just have in there because the botvin, um, you know, type lessons and things like that do start quite young. You know, fourth and fifth grade, they're, you're prep, preparing students to know, to say no, you know, eventually in their lifetime. So um, they did just reissue that out and they are um, providing support to schools and districts as to how to unroll this curriculum, the anti-vaping curriculum, as well as obviously the consequences and things like that, that the high school has if they catch somebody in that type of thing in their handbooks, there are consequences. But do know there's an education part of this. And there is a class at the high school on anti-vaping and healthy um, bodies of mind. So there is work that we need to do in this area curriculally, but there are things on the docket to be done.
And just for clarification purposes, the education I do think needs to become the, begin at the elementary level. Um, I was thinking more in terms of, I think your greater issue starts at your middle school and high school, but um, but the education component, like all good education, needs to start at that foundational level at the elementary.
I, I'd like to add a little bit too. Um, I'm seeing this from a different perspective. I'm seeing it with um, adults with addictive behavior. Um, and what I, I want us to do, we talk all the time about deep learning. And I think that deep learning has to happen so, so much in um, S E L. Um, we have to, the, the kids who are vaping are vaping for a reason. They're not happy kids would not be doing that. Kids who feel really good and co, confident in themselves, who feel um, that they're empowered, w- would not be in the bathrooms vaping. So we really need to work so hard on finding a way to get these kids to feel okay again. And I can't, I can't stress that enough. That it's, it's looking at the reasons about what's going on there is as important as educating them. You know, I keep thinking about the, the old just say no education stuff that my kids got. I, I'm here to tell you, it did not work. Did not work. Um, so that's something I think we have to address as a system too.
Well, this is helpful for me to go back also um, to next, next, uh, next month. It's on the eighth. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joan. And Liberty?
Yeah, I just had one more comment along those lines. I mean, I was thinking about, you know, what if they offered like as a alternative to a health therapy class, like a yoga for anxiety or yoga for stress reduction or like breathing and meditation and mindfulness offerings, just because like you were saying, Martha, if people are like calm and happy and feeling comfortable in their own skin, they may be less likely to vape or, you know, do some of these behaviors that we see.
You know, there are those schools that are, for, um, a lot of them are inner city schools that are doing, uh, instead of disciplining by suspension or after school, um, it, it's a meditation um, or a yoga um, classes. So it's teaching a new skill to replace the um, what, the, the not very good coping skills that, that are being used. So I think that I, I don't know if that exists at the high school as a discipline, as a, as a step um, in procedure uh, for somebody who is caught vaping in school. Um, and it's an opportunity to teach other skills.
If I might add one more thing, I'm sorry, Martha, is that all right?
That's good. I was muted. I, I said your name, but you can't read lips.
It's okay. So I just want to let the committee know too, that we just started, um, actually the last week. Um, both the elementary teachers, middle school teachers and the high school teachers are being trained on a um, social emotional screener. Um, that will help us pick up on some of these traits. So the social emotional screener um, is a teacher screener, but it's also a, a self-administered screener at the high school. And it picks up on the um, si, the castle straits, um, castle um, skills, which are like self-management, that type of thing, you know, um, social skills, you know, that, all those things. But it also has two additional one. And one is optimistic thinking. And the other one is the ability to set goals and realize goals. Um, so we picked that because it had those eight indicators where we might be able to see kids that we might not necessarily be on our radar, that we can start working on those interventions. And again, when I talked about the multi-tiered system of support, that's what we're talking about. That on the screener, just like a reading screener or a math screener, these children might come up and um, need, they, everybody needs regular, you know, tiered one education. Everybody has access to that. The certain children might need intervention and some of these other coping skills or coping mechanisms. Where then our, you know, school adjustment counselors, our classroom teachers, our psychologists, whatever it might be, will be able to go in and provide some of those other discreet teaching um, expectations so that they can develop those skills so that they are healthy and well and making good choices about their bodies and minds and spirit. So we're just starting that. The first screening is tomorrow um, with the elementary and the middle, and then the high school will come online in the next month. And we'll be able to watch that progress over time as well.
Um, I don't have this well thought out, but my passion for the last twenty five years has been executive functioning. And this all comes um, as I wish there was a class on executive functioning for students. And not the students only at risk, but normalizing it for students that um, are, are even bright. Because everybody hits a piece that's hard for them eventually. Even if they're good at doing school, you know, they go to Amherst College and all of a sudden, ah, um, whatever. Uh, and there's so much for them to learn about their brain. And so many good strategies that can be utilized, that are fun, uh, doable um, and can be implemented by classroom teachers to support that it's not just students that need executive functions, but functioning, but we all do. So it's, I, it's this kind of thing that I could talk about for hours, so I won't. But I, it's important, I think.
Robin and Joan, thank you both for that. Robin, I love information. So I'm wondering if you could send me in a text or just a quick email, the name of the screener that you're using.
Is it appropriate to put it in the, the chat here? Is that allowed for rules of Robert to Robert rules?
Yes, because we've, we've brought this up before at previous meetings and actually even alluded to it again tonight, the desk screener. So um, yes, it's um, something we've alluded to in a, a number of different meetings and certainly around this table as well.
I just need to know how to spell it.
Yep. So I, I put it in there, but it's aperture, A P E R T U R, education. And it's the D E S S A screener.
Okay. And Joan, um, school council, did you not meet? I bet you didn't.
I thought it was done. Uh, we did not meet, but we will.
I know you will. You're gonna love them. They're so much fun. Very calm. Thank you. Um, are there any other reports that I'm missing? Okay. Um, then I think it's just time to approve the minutes on January eleventh. Any uh, corrections or questions on those? Lovely. May I have a motion to approve them? Thank you, Liberty. Was that a motion? Yeah. Okay.
So pardon a second.
Okay, all, all those in favor? And finally, a motion to adjourn.
She'll put them, so moved.
Thank you.
One second.
Right. Thank you. And I guess all those in favor? Okay. Oh, wait. Well, i- if you have agenda ideas, I forgot to ask about that. Um, just send them to me, please. Um, we've got some ideas, Brooke and I, but it's always good to have more.
Thank you.
Have a good week. Have a good February vacation for those of you who are affected by that. I still think I am. So enjoy it.
Thank you, Martha.
Take care, everybody.
Everyone, have a good one. Thank you. Bye bye.